I think it was a number that appeared to be comfortable after a lot of conversation. And certainly, I mean, speaking for myself personally, deferring more to the smaller business representatives who are on the group. I don't know. Fair to say? But it was, yeah, I can't tell you that this was one where there was a clear, good benchmark out there.
Okay, thank you. And I also had another question about contract employees and temp employees. I'm guessing that they could be covered because if they're a temp employee working for a temp company, then the temp company, even if they're not based in Minneapolis, would have to be providing those there. Then there's the independent contractor idea, and we seem to have more and more of those like entities. And the shared economy even opens things up there. What's the intention maybe of the group and the recommendation for how those people get covered?
So, the intention was for the temp employee to be covered by their employer, which would be the temp agency. The intent on independent contractors, since that's a single individual, was to not cover, not require that individual to provide sick time to themselves. And that's where the, the language on the microemployer, instead of saying less than four employees, says one to three employees. That's intended to not include the independent contractor.
Okay. We had a good amount of discussion on that. I think one thing we didn't want to get into, that maybe fall into the trap of, was to start to come up with a, a separate, distinct definition of independent contractor, say, and then employers might find either at the Department of Labor, state, federal level. We had those kind of conversations. And also, though, there was some late conversation, and it's in the report, I believe on page 12, that at least addresses the issue of, this would be relevant in some situations, where contractors, their licensing to do work for the city could be affected if they were a repeat offender of, say, the ordinance, if, once it was passed. So, we were trying, that was another way to deal with some of the concerns around this broader issue of temp agencies or contract employers.
Appreciate that. And then I just have one last question, which was about the bereavement issue. I'm curious about why you just didn't recommend that we include that. To me, that looks awfully close to a family leave and medical. I mean, it's something that's right in the same kind of wheelhouse of Bailey Wick or whatever we want to call it. And I might be inclined to say the council, maybe he just wants to wrap that in, as, in there as well. So, was there some controversy there? Or was it just it was slightly outside of the scope we had asked you to look at?
I think there was just, there was not a full consensus around the table that it was within the scope. We were trying to be conscious of the scope of the charge we were given. So, that's why we ended up putting it as a supplemental recommendation instead of as one of the core recommendations.
Fair to say, no controversy. And I also think there was fair to say that, at least through listening sessions, there's certainly plenty of bereavement policies in existence already, as well as, or policy, or broader time off policies that would provide that. But I don't think there was controversy that, that, that it should or should not be provided. I think Liz hits the point is that we weren't clear if that was really within our scope. If you guys decide differently, I don't think that would create controversy amongst the people that were on the group.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to note, to allow enough dialogue and conversation, I'm going to suggest that we will take some questions and answers until about 11:15. That is 15 minutes later than we said we would start our park board presentation, but I think that that is okay. I want to make sure we have an opportunity to have some questions and answers on this really important presentation. And so, that's a little heads up to my colleagues, as well as I know we have some park board people who have been here or arrived, although we did, we did give heads up that we wouldn't start before 11 o'clock. So, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a quick comment and then ask a quick question. I just want to say I'm so grateful for all the work that you put into this. I'm so impressed by the level of thought and careful consideration, the level of engagement. I think you've come up with a very balanced approach here, and it's going to be incredibly meaningful for the people of our city and overall public health. And so, I want to thank you all so much for it. It really shows how hard you worked, and we are all grateful for that. My question for you is on the issue of employers who are not located in the city but have employees working in the city. Can you give me some thoughts on, or did you have a, a lot of discussion around enforcement and how that might occur for that? And whether the individual, if they work in Minneapolis only a very small, is it proportionate, the amount of time that they would earn to them being in the city? Or just in general, if they're only in the city 10% of their time, would they still have full coverage? Or would it only be proportionate to that amount of time that they're in?
Well, I don't believe there was any discussion about proportionate. Again, back to the 80 hours of work in the city in Minneapolis. We had a lot of discussion on this topic, was probably took up a considerable amount of time during the first couple of meaty business meetings. And again, I think it's an example of balance. I mean, we were definitely on this issue, looking at the, the aspects of a lot of different ordinances around the country. I, I think there's, there's a lot of different examples about how they're exactly trying to get at this issue. And we, I think we acknowledged in our discussions that there is an enforcement question that I'm not sure would have been productive for the Workplace Partnership Group to nail down itself, and realizing that that's probably going to be some work for a combination of the City Attorney's Office and whatever agency is going to enforce the ordinance. We also know, I think, that in some situations in other cities, this is an issue that is still being kind of perfected. Is that fair to say? So, I mean, a lot of attention to it. I don't know that there was a perfect answer for us to come to that would, you know, just solve all of the problems that conceivably could come up in that, in that arena.
And I think I would just add that the, it was very intentional to name the scope as individuals working in the city as opposed to employers, for example, who are headquartered in the city. One, because that's a more clear connection to the public health implications, because those are the individuals that are serving food and providing healthcare services, et cetera. And also not to introduce a perverse incentive or unintended consequence to encourage employers to locate outside of the city. And then I think, as Jim mentioned, that 80-hour threshold is intended to consider individuals who work such infrequent shifts, or individuals who spend such a small amount of time working in the city, that it's a, sort of the amount of time they would earn for that would not be enough to accrue meaningful leave. And so, we didn't want the employer to have to track it as such a small number of hours. But apart from the, that, the intent is for covering individuals who, for the time that they work in the city, provided that that's more than 80 hours, and that's similar, as Jim mentioned, to how other cities have approached that issue.
Thank you. I think that context is very helpful and to know the intent as we move forward. So, thank you again.
Thanks. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Given that we are short of time, I won't go into depth thanking all of you, but I do want to say seriously, thank you. As it was formerly a disjointed process, you've provided quite a bit of cohesion that I think allowed this ordinance to move forward. And I must say, I, I really do like the overall conclusion, that one, one hour for every 30, the 48 per year, 80 in total. A couple of questions. The, it's, so I believe it's an 80, it's 80 hours that brings you under coverage. And I just want to know a little bit about what was the thought process that went into arriving at that number? You've alluded to it a little bit already. I mean, what I'm seeing is, is, on the one hand, 80 hours isn't a lot, but on the other hand, if you're at 80 hours, you're only getting two hours worth of paid sick time, which wouldn't even give you a day. So, what was the, I mean, I could actually make the argument both ways, is that it should be zero, and on the other hand, that it should be greater. So, I was just wondering what your thought process was.
So, I would say, again, I think the intent was around not requiring employers to track individuals who work such a small number of hours in the city, but it may just be burdensome to track that individual when the amount of time that individual is going to accrue is not going to be meaningful. 80 is a standard that we've seen in a lot of other cities. So, we are also just taking into consideration, how do we take advantage of opportunities to align to other municipalities with an eye toward national employers, for example, and being able to have some similarities in what this looks like in different parts of the country?
75% of.
Okay, thank you.
75% of the, in the, in the ordinances that we've looked at had that number roughly.
Okay.
And I, thanks. And I think the other consideration is, so it's really intended for the very, for the individual picking up an occasional shift, or who's working a occasional amount of time in Minneapolis. The balancing consideration is not wanting to introduce a too long of a waiting period for an individual who's starting a job, to have to wait until that individual is able to start accruing time. And that's where going beyond an 80 hours, you know, which is essentially creates a two-week waiting period for a full-time employee, in addition to a three-month period in which an individual can accrue but not necessarily use their time. We wanted to not, you know, prolong, inadvertently prolong the amount of time that an individual would have before they can start both accruing and using their time.
The only thing I might add is, I think we also, at one point, talked about, you know, particularly amongst low-wage workers through listening sessions, realizing that it's very common for them to have more than one job. And maybe with even, within those, within each job, not having a lot of hours. But so, for that, I mean, so you bring up a question, I think you brought up as part of your question, if, if that's all you did, it's, you would only earn a very little bit of sick time anyway, but that, that little bit of sick time might add up and become a little bit more meaningful if you take into context they might have three jobs.
Fair point. Good point. And then, I, I know you said you really didn't address enforcement overall. Was there a, was there any discussion, not just of enforcement, of a violation of the underlying ordinance, but also retaliation for reporting a violation of the ordinance? And I, I guess maybe that's directed more to a counselor?
Well, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to give you the impression we didn't talk about enforcement.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not saying you didn't. You said that was, you thought that that was going to be more addressed by the city later. I'm just, I'm just wondering what, what the, what the conversation was around.
Well, if, if you can appreciate, not everybody on the Workplace Partnership Group is an employment lawyer like myself.
Right.
So, I could, I would love to have that conversation in detail. I think a lot of folks there, you know, come from different walks of life, whether it's business or the jobs they work in. And I, I think that was one of those little rabbit holes that we could have burned two or three meetings, trying to get into the details of enforcement. And I'm not sure how productive it would have been for the, for the group in that setting.
Yep.
To try to merit, you know, to really get that kind of granularity on.
Then maybe we'll have a discussion, just a discussion offline. I'd love to.
Sure.
Love to figure it out, how to make it work.
And I would just maybe add, just to reference this, and this is on page 11 of the document, the language that we ended up moving forward on this issue, that says the city's policy should explicitly state that employees are protected from retaliation in any form when exercising the rights provided under this policy.
Yeah.
And then there's balancing language in there for.
Right.
Situations of a misuse of the policy as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to make just a brief comment and then a question. So, first, I wanted to say that, well, thank you as well, but, but both in this process, but also even in the previous iteration of the engagement that we had done last year on this issue, we heard loud and clear from the business community, a need for there to be more support for businesses, particularly our small and local businesses in the city. And I just wanted to say that I have heard that loud and clear. I know that all of us have heard that message, and I really appreciated the extra initiative that many members of the group took to not only voice that, but to go farther and start to put together some concrete proposals that I've seen and I know have been in front of, I think, the mayor and council president and other council members, so we can start to, start to take some concrete action, to really put into action, you know, the strong support that we all feel for, especially our small and local businesses. The question I had was, it seems to me that a lot of the decisions that were recommended by the partnership group kind of err toward the side of, of consistency across business sizes and types. And I wonder if you could talk about that, maybe in particular, on the accrual rate question, which was one that we had discussed previously about potentially having tiers of accrual for different business sizes. And this recommendation landed on having a consistent number across businesses. That's maybe one example of many. And could you talk through that, how that conversation went and how you landed at, for example, the six days of accrual across business sizes?
So, we did have a series of conversations on that exact issue. And I think we landed on a simple standard, partly because of valuing simplicity. I think that from both the perspective of perhaps maybe both employers, employees, and the city, we saw a value in employees understanding what they're eligible for, regardless of which employer they're in, they work for, and regardless of the size of that employer. I think from employer perspective, we saw a value in the simplicity of knowing what their responsibilities were, and not having that change if they were to hire an additional employee, or change if they were to let go an employee. We also just had in mind the ability of the city to administer something efficiently and effectively, and thought there would be a value in not having to invest resources in evaluating the size of employer and coming up with measurements for that, and dealing with some of the complications around how you would measure an individual's workforce, and how to deal with changes in the size of a, the size of a workforce. So, I think it really came out of an appreciation for the value of having something that both recognizes the diversity of the employer community in Minneapolis, and having some of the modifications, particularly for small employers that we talked about, but also seeing that just overall, something that is simpler will work best from a variety of perspectives.
Exactly. And I would just add two things. One, I think listening sessions, certainly from an anecdotal standpoint, told us that a lot of low-wage workers have two things in common. One, less access to sick leave in general, and tend to work for smaller or medium-sized employers in general. Now, it's not, not across the board, it's not 100%, but that, those were certainly two themes that came out anecdotally. So, then you have to think about, well, if you start to go down the, the path of tier, do you solve the problem as good as, as you might want to solve it, particularly from a public health standpoint? I think also, I remember hearing in discussions from, I mean, this was a very richly debated topic. And, you know, I remember hearing at times from small business representatives on the group, as well as people that represented the nonprofit community, that it was a struggle to balance that concern versus wanting to be, I'm trying to think of how Danny used to say it, as, you know, just as good of an employer as anybody else in the city, trying to, you know, we should all have the same standards on certain issues that are important. And I think it came down to the issue of also a recognition that this really gets at the heart of some of the equity issues that, that we see taking place in the city. And so, again, if you go down, it's not that the tiering concept hasn't been done in some other communities, and it's not that it's not valid, but you, you, you do pay a price for that, too. And it's, and again, we came to this balance, so.
All right. So, we have three more people with questions, and I'm hopeful we can get through all three of those and still stay with kind of our stated objective of trying to take this to at least about 11:15. We will take just a short break, like a couple of minutes, to allow people, if they wish to leave, because they've been here for one item, and then there, I know there's a lot of people out there, and other people may want to come in. So, I just wanted to give that heads up. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, in my office, have made every attempt to be at each listening session and most of these policy meetings of your group, so I can certainly see how challenging a job it was at trying to synthesize a package here. Almost all of my concerns around this are reflective of small businesses. A couple of small points that I'm just wondering how consensus arrived, is one, I'm, I'm a little concerned about where you suggest is being able to withhold a license. Some of the most challenging abuses of worker labor in, in southwest Minneapolis is within the construction industry, and that's a really tricky thing, whether independent contractors or subcontractors. Is there been, has there been any discussion about how to coordinate this at levels where they can actually be controlled, like at the state level? I'm just curious if there's some person at the state in a labor department that can help to coordinate that between the city and the state level? So, that's one small question. The second is a, a question at how the 90 days were arrived at, beginning to be able to use the sick time that you suggest. A, a small but important part of, something I've heard a lot about, but not one of your target audiences in the problem scope, is student workers. So, restaurant owners use, you know, seasonal summer student workers to do things like open up their patios or their outdoor dining options. And they want to be able to earn money from the first time school was out until they go back in the fall. This 90 days seems to kind of squeeze that a little bit tight. And so, was that, it seems a little narrow for that purpose. So, is this an exempt, is this an exemption consideration that you guys had a conversation about? Or is, is your consideration about how other populations of low-wage workers are affected here? Those are just kind of two of my brief questions.
Hold on, maybe first, to maybe, maybe start with your last point first. One thing to note is, an individual employee would accrue time during that 60-day period, but the employer wouldn't be required to provide them time off. And I think the intent of that really was to provide some flexibility for employers in situations of seasonal workers. It's clear that the employer, again, can provide the time, can give the individual that time off if they so choose. I wouldn't be surprised if we see employers who do decide to give that individual the time off, since they have earned the time. But I think that was intended to give some flexibility to employers on both seasonal employees and also individuals who may not stay in a position for very long. It was important for us to have that employee accruing the time, so that once that 90-day period is over, if that individual gets sick, they do have some time that they've earned in order to be able to use it. Let me ask on your first question. Your question was, is there someone at the state level that a city employee could coordinate with on the, as it relates to contracts? Is that correct?
Pardon me. Well, not as it relates to contracts, but as it relates to being able to earn sick time, being able to withhold a license. Like, you spoke about being able to take away somebody's business license if they're a flagrant, you know.
Well, I, I'm not sure. I, I think the comment I made earlier about licensing might have been more with people licensing to do business with the city, and if they were repeat offenders of the ordinance, that might affect their ability to do business with the city.
Contracts the city holds with others.
Correct.
Got it.
That's correct. Yes. Okay.
Okay. That answers my question. My, the only last part, and I don't mean to take up a, a lot of time here, is, has there been discussion, because I wasn't there for it, about how these efforts will promote more adoption like this across the state, and ultimately change the course of this, you know, on the national landscape? Is it being discussed to coordinate and implement things similar now for our neighbors in St. Paul? Like, are you being asked as experts now to engage in their process? Because that is one of the larger goals here.
Right. Yeah, thank you. That's a good question. So, we have made clear in St. Paul that we are available as a resource to help support the conversation that's moving forward in St. Paul, and have already provided some assistance in the St. Paul conversation. I think that Minneapolis, moving forward with a framework, I think is very likely to encourage St. Paul to consider, this is my speculation, but that I think it's likely to encourage St. Paul to consider a similar approach, at least as you look at some of the core components, in order to have policies that align in both of those cities. Obviously, that will depend on the council members in, in St. Paul, the mayor in St. Paul, the members of the working group in St. Paul. But I think there's likely, they would likely see a value in looking at the path that Minneapolis is taking and thinking about opportunities to align for the purposes of having something that's not too different from both an employer and employee perspective on both sides of the river.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I have myself in queue, and I might just do one, I think, clarification on the last question, just because I think there was a little mixing up of terms. We were talking about a license, and then we were talking about a contract. And I think Councilmember Palmasano, and I've read the report, too, was asking a question about your recommendation that related to licenses, which is different than city contracts. So, it's still about a relationship with the city, but I just want to make that clarification, just because I think that's what was in your report. I had a question about the section in your report that talked about casual employees. So, this is a section where, in your report, you say that the Workplace Partnership Group's intention is that the council's action engages most employers and employees in Minneapolis to be in compliance without offering blanket exception, exemptions. That said, members acknowledge that there will be some challenge in considering how casual employees and others with unique employment arrangements should be treated. And then you recommend that we give particular consideration during implementation to accommodate those other than typical arrangements beyond what has been recommended here. So, I wanted to just understand those comments a little bit more, in part because I know that we have heard from those, and I, I will say, those I've heard from are in the healthcare industry about this. My understanding is that casual is not a term that is defined in law. This is more a term of art that is used in a particular industry to talk about a certain type of arrangement of how workers engage with the employer and, and their workplace arrangements. So, could you just give us a little bit more feedback on what you were intending with those comments?
Yeah, thank you. So, this was a, a conversation that was brought forward by the healthcare representative from Abbott, who is a member of our partnership group, to provide more information about the casual employees. I think we wanted to, at the end of the day, just kind of flag this issue for the council for further conversation. So, these are individuals who work less, who have ability, considerable control over their schedule, and whether they end up opting to work a shift or not, do not work a regular schedule, for the most part. As you look in other parts of the country, some of the cities have moved forward with covering casual employees, others have not. Some employers provide sick time to casual employers, others do not. I think to the point that you raised, the term casual is an industry-used term, but not a more broadly-defined term. So, we, I think we're challenged a little bit in an appropriate salute, appropriate approach to this that wasn't inadvertently overly broad, and wouldn't inadvertently sweep up other classifications of workers that we didn't intend to. So, that was an issue that was raised. We didn't reach a, a full, clear recommendation on it, so opted to flag it for the council to give further consideration.
The only thing I might add to that is that it could conceivably be addressed better on the enforcement side, based on the circumstances. I, I cannot understand why an enforcement agency could not, under the factual circumstances of, say, the use of casual employee in the healthcare industry, couldn't decline to pursue a violation of the ordinance if they saw facts that showed you were truly in this casual relationship, you have 100% ability to turn down a shift, take a shift, and somehow you would be coming forward, trying to say, I'm owed sick leave under a certain set of circumstances? It's very complicated, and there's probably no perfect answer, but that's another approach that could solve that problem.
Thank you. We have one more question, and then we have, the mayor asked to make a brief comment. I'm going to ask if a staff person could maybe let folks know outside that we will have a definite break before we turn to the park board item, just so we kind of slow down on the doors opening and closing. We've had a very important report that's been presented to us by this group that has spent so much time, and I just want to make sure we're able to give them the respect of allowing their presentation without too many more interruptions. So, I just want to ask that privilege, please. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, ask a couple of questions. The first one is just a very minor point, but did, did the chairs and vice chair just decide not to vote at the, in there? Because I mean, I certainly don't see your names on.
Oh, no. We voted.
Oh, you voted? Okay. Okay.
Pretty sure it was yes.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm looking at that. I'm not seeing your names, apparently.
Oh, okay. That's a mistake, if you're not seeing it on there.
Okay.
We did both vote, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for asking.
All right. You know, the second question is in relationship to, I see, I see that Steve Kramer was the dissent. Could you generally summarize what was his dissent? And I, I know Mr. Kramer is here, and, you know, you know, I certainly just want a short summary of that, if that's possible, and/or, you know, at some point, I mean, I guess we'll hear from Steve anyway.
Thank you. Yes, and I think the Steve's opinion, I think, is, should be included with the background materials that that council member's received. So, at the risk of summarizing, I think, which obviously can read in more detail in what Steve has submitted, the approach that he brought, which is more of a voluntary system for employers in Minneapolis, we did discuss a few times at the Workplace Partnership Group. And at the end, the group as a whole felt that the approach that we laid forth in the recommendations was the one that was going to better overall meet the. recommendations was the one that was going to better overall meet the overall goals that we had on improving public health, employee well-being, and a stronger business climate in Minneapolis. So that was the decision reached by the group as a whole.
Thank you, and thank you for that question, Councilmember Yang. So I believe that we have dealt with the council member questions and comments, and Mayor Hodges is here, did you have a question or a comment? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President, for a time here to speak. And I do want to give profound thanks to the entire group, particularly to Liz and Jim for your very hard work as chair and vice chair. And I want to thank you both, and Danny Schwartzman as my appointees, for the time and energy that you've put in and guiding the process, to Luke, to our staff, and to the council for your consideration and your care for this. This is one of the most important policy considerations we will make together as a leadership team in our four years together. And I, I think the report that's been brought forward has answered so many of the questions, and, and spent, you, you all spent so much of the time needed to answer some very thorny questions, and I appreciate it. I think there's a lot of good that we can work with here. When I raised this issue in my state of the city almost a year ago, it's because there's a need, and you have helped us answer how we can best meet that need. And I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with folks moving forward to see where we can take it from here. It's been a great process, a community-based process, a lot of input, and I echo Vice President Glickens thanks for, to all the people who showed up, to all those listening groups, the people on the committee, and the residents and concerned and interested parties who showed up to really help inform this outcome and this result. It really is community-based, and I really do appreciate the time and energy you put in.
Thank you. And I'll just say again, thank you one more time, thank you for the presentation. Thank you to so many of the Workplace Partnership members who have taken their time to be here for the entire presentation. I'll say on behalf of myself, I think that you have given us a great product, and I just want to, again, thank you for that. You have taken the time to vet out what I think were some different points of view on where this could go, and I just have to say, I think that is extremely helpful. And thank you for a very solid product. And we will be having a staff direction on Friday that articulates some next steps. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will take a pause of just a couple minutes so that people can exit, and then more people can enter comfortably. And we also have some paper to pass out that relates to the park board. Conversations. I just want to note that not everyone has a seat here today, and I believe, I'm looking for our clerk, that room 319 has been set up as an overflow room. So I just, you know, you may not want to go there now, but then after you've been standing, and it goes on, I want to let you know there's a place you can go and be more comfortable if you wish. And they will have a live stream to this presentation, and room 319 is just right over that way, so I want you to note that. I'm getting organized here. One more request, and I'll just say this is not about anybody here, but in the last presentation, we had cell phones go off a couple of times. And just knowing we have a lot of people in here, just a reminder, take this out, look at whether you have your ringer off, and we would appreciate that. We have an important presentation by our park board superintendent, and, and then some related presentations from city staff, and then some discussion. So we are about to begin our item number two for this committee. This is the discussion of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board's proposal for a referendum to address park board funding needs. I want to acknowledge that we have been joined not only by the superintendent and many of her staff, but by several commissioners, and, and you might help me if I'm not recognizing everyone who's in the room, because there are a lot of people here, but we have President Walensky is here, Commissioner Stephanie Musich is here, I know that Commissioner Anita Tab is here, and are there, I'm sorry, and Commissioner Meg Forni is here, and are there others? And then we also have our Board of Estimate and Taxation, elected representative Carol Becker is here, any others who are here? All right, I want to make sure I get a chance to recognize those in the room. So I think with that, we said that we would hear first from Superintendent Miller. Oh, there she is. And so we are ready, when you are ready, to begin.
First of all, thank you, council members, for having us here this morning. Very appreciative of that. And I also want to thank not only our commissioners for being here, but Minneapolis Parks Foundation and the Save Minneapolis Parks Citizen Group that is here. So thank you very much for your support. Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, council members, what I, what I have given to you, you should have a packet of materials that I'll walk you through as I do my presentation, as well as I think President Johnson has passed to you also a resolution. And I'm going to just, I know I've done a number of presentations to city council on our funding gap at neighborhood parks, but it's been a while. So I'm going to try to quickly go through the history, just to remind everybody where we are, and where, what the challenges are that we're facing, and then walk you through the resolution that is before you today, and then obviously be able to answer any questions after that. So just to take us back, really, over the past four years at the park board, we have done an amazing amount of internal work that's been painful at times, but has really helped us to look at how we can improve our operating efficiencies and service delivery. We've made really significant strides in improving and identifying efficiencies, to the point that actually we are saving $2.3 million a year in certain areas of our operations, particularly in forestry, trash collections, as, as well as some maintenance areas. Not that we're not spending that money, but because of the efficiencies we've had, we're able to redeploy that money elsewhere in the organization. Even with those efficiency improvements that we've made, we have faced significant financial reductions, really for a 10-year period, going back to 2003 through 2013, where we lost almost 22% of our full-time workforce. And the value of our dollar at the park board in 2013 in the general fund was $10 million less than it was in 2003. You couple that also with the aging infrastructure we have in our system, and we still have some significant financial challenges. So in 2014, as the beginning stages of our budget process for 2015, I engaged the board in a conversation about the financial challenges we're facing, and they gave me the direction to help develop a strategy to address them. To give you some perspective, the capital needs of the park